All right, we will call this meeting to order. We need to adopt the agenda to have a motion to do that.
So move.
Mr. Springer has made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
All right, we have two seconds. All in favor, Mr. Springer?
Aye.
And Ms. Burns?
Aye.
Mr. Spivey?
Aye.
And Mr. Cordero?
Aye, good morning.
All right, good morning. That's unanimous. All right, item three is involving the Department of Transportation and it looks like they're not here yet. So I guess let's, uh, it's okay with everybody, let's go to the next item, couple of things and maybe they'll come on. So 3.2 is the School Board Association Delegate and Mr. Springer has indicated that he would like to go to that, so we need to have a simple vote to approve that and I appreciate him stepping up and taking care of that for us. So do we have a motion to approve Mr. Springer? To be our School Board Association Delegate?
So you need Mr. Cordero.
All right, Mr. Cordero has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
All right, have two seconds. All in favor, Mr. Spivey?
Aye.
Mr. Cordero?
Aye.
Ms. Burns?
Aye.
And Mr. Springer?
Aye.
All right, unanimous, thank you. Oh, okay, she just came in. All right, we'll go back to item 3.1 with the, uh, Okay, with DOT. No, she's Oh, okay, okay. All right. So we still need to wait on DOT then, correct? All right, is anyone with the DOT with us on the call?
Aye, yes.
Oh, okay, good morning. Thank you for coming.
And Kirsten, sorry, Kirsten Sprakas, District One in Jacksonville.
All right, good morning, thank you for coming as well. All right, we'll get started, uh, who wants to? Dr. Breedlove?
Yeah, I can kinda get us started here. Last time we met on September the ninth, we, we met to discuss really the TIA permit and kind of the situation on 210 with the building of the K-8. We kinda went through, we all know that the traffic situation on 210 and in that eastern side of, of our district as we're building this 2,300-seat school just off of, just about a mile down from Highway 17 on Highway 210 and just kinda, just to refresh everybody's memory, we talked about roundabouts originally, of course, that was now, that has been taken away just because of the, the cost and, and really would that do the job that, that needs to be done? We also looked, looked at traffic signals, kinda where we're landing now out on 210 and entering and exiting into and out, out of the school. We spoke also about looking at any types of mitigations in helping with the traffic pattern. We have about a mile of queuing inside on the school premises for our traffic coming in and coming out of, of that area. One of the mitigation items that, that, you know, really came up is, is really the, uh, to the, to the tip is whether or not Pender County Schools is being required to have a staggered bell schedule or not. Currently, we do not have a staggered bell for middle and elementary schools. And for this to be a mitigation, obviously, this is something that we need to look at and whether or not this is a requirement for us to get permitted for the driveway and access into 210. And I think that's kinda where we ended. Really what this meeting is about is really to discuss, is that being required? And what action does the board need to take in order to keep this project moving along? Did I, anybody want to add anything to the last discussion? Kind of, I know I went fairly quickly, but I think I captured really what is the essence of this meeting and what we need to do.
This is Kirsten Sprakas with DOT.
Yes, ma'am.
So, so we don't, um, I'm just, just, this is going off of the terminology we use. So a TIA is not a permitted item. A TIA will show us the analysis, then we make a decision on what the required improvement will be. And the TIA is reviewed by MSTA, the District Office and typically, uh, MS, I said that wrong, MSTA, District Office and our Division Traffic Office usually all have our, and the TIA. So that, then we'll, then we'll lead to a TIA approval letter with the required improvements and a funding letter from MSTA. And Tammy can correct me if I get any of that wrong. But then, then you'll come to the district for your actual driveway permit. And that's when you will, you know, submit for that. You'll have plans that include the required improvements in them that are reviewed and permitted at the district level. But we're, at this point, we are not even close to any of that because we only have received a draft TIA to which comments were provided on the draft TIA. So we don't even have a, we don't have a final TIA that's been submitted that we reviewed. So there's no requirements at this point. There were a lot of comments on the draft TIA, one being, you know, we wanna, the staggered, I mean, it, it looks, you know, by the analysis that this would be, um, a necessary thing to mitigate the traffic impact. And then we always want to see, you know, what different improvements were used or reviewed to mitigate the traffic. I do not recall that a signal was even reviewed and I believe it was supposed to be. I can't find, I was trying to locate the, um, the scope, but I believe that a signal was supposed to be reviewed. I will locate that. But anyway, so I just wanted to kinda state that, that it's, we don't have anything required and approved at this point. It's just preliminary comments on a draft TIA. So it's kinda hard for us to answer from the DOT side, answer anything further about the TIA.
So is that, that mean, so does that mean that there is nothing needed from our Board of Education at this time for, to keep this project moving along? And as we begin the construction phase?
Well, well, like I said, we need a, a final TIA that addresses the comments that were given on the draft TIA. We need a final TIA. Then that TIA will be reviewed to ensure that it address, address our previous comments. And then if it has, then it will be, uh, an approval letter will be developed based on the analysis provided. And then you will submit to our office, the District Office, to get a driveway permit.
Okay.
And the driveway permit, you know, obviously, it'll show all the required improvements within your submittal and that will be reviewed as part of the driveway permit process. So I, I believe, I believe that I'm answering your question. So right now, at this point, it, it would seem, from our perspective, it would seem that, um, it would be between the board and your, and your traffic engineer to have the discussion to see how, how can you address the preliminary comments on the TIA and what mitigation can you look at to address the traffic impact?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is Mr. Cordero. I do have one or a couple of questions, if that's permissible.
Yes, sir.
Um, ma'am, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I have two questions. And feel free to answer in any order or way that you feel would help us. The first question is, I don't know if you might be aware of any circumstances under which DOT has required any local education agency throughout the state to implement to your bell schedule as a result of a TIA to mitigate traffic impacts? So, you know, essentially, I'm kinda determined, is this within the realm of possibility or maybe we received some inaccurate information? And maybe give an example of that from another school district, if, if that's the case, and you did require it, and under what circumstances? And then the second part of my question is, as you, I'm sure, are aware, there's significant traffic improvements bypassed being constructed in vicinity of this school. And so if you could maybe shed some light on typical procedures that DOT implements to incorporate under construction improvements that will improve traffic flow when it comes to something like this. So, you know, essentially, I'm trying to get at, any TIA that's done right now is not really gonna be valid by 2027 when the school opens. And so is it prudent or might we consider doing another TIA after the bypass opens? And I'm not sure exactly when that date is, maybe you can tell us that. But those are kinda just two parts of my question. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so for, um, I'll address what you were saying about the bypass and then I'll let Tammy address the question about, um, if some, if a school elsewhere in the state has been, had a requirement to look at a staggered bell schedule because, you know, I, I just deal with Onslow in Pender County, so I wouldn't know that. But I'll, I'll go ahead and answer the other question first. So, um, and if I, if I missed some of your question in my answering, then just let me know. So one, one thing to remember is the distribution of traffic have, I believe it's, I'm in the TIA right now, trying to find it, but I believe it's 65% coming from the east, meaning from US-17 area. And only 35% Yes, that's correct, I found it. And only 35% of the traffic coming from the west. And that was, you know, we asked that the distribution of traffic be provided based on where the school would be pulling students from. So of course, that tells us that the school is pulling the majority of their students from east of the site. So, so that, you know, that would lessen the, um, the impact of the bypass on your site. And when I say impact, I mean, like, the good impact. In other words, it's pulling traffic from, like, helping the traffic issues, uh, based on your distributions. But we also, the, the bypass that I'm, sorry, I did not get official, um, you know, at this point, projected completion dates, but I do know it's around somewhere maybe late 2026. And it only goes, obviously, as you know, it only goes to NC-210. So it'll be e, the section that goes from NC-210 down to connect to the Military Cut Off Extension Project. That's called the A Section. That will begin at the end of the B Section, which is the northern section, 210 to north of, uh, the top, north of, uh, Tuxell High School. So I think, you know, once the full bypass is complete, which is much further out beyond 2030, you know, that will help the existing traffic on 210 and US-17, like, improve those corridors more than just the northern section. Uh, so, because if the northern section is not like one from 210 to north of the high school, you know, we're gonna get a lot of, a lot of traffic on 210 actually, because, you know, if you're taking the bypass, whereas normally you might have just stayed on US-17, but if you're taking the bypass, then you gotta get off at 210. And you either need to go, you know, west towards the, um, I guess like the Castle Hain area, or you need to go east back to US-17 once you get there. So I don't think when the school is built out that we're gonna see the improvements that you feel that we would be seeing at the school.
Yeah, I wanted to follow up.
I hope that, um, that helped.
Yeah, it does. But, yeah, it does, it does. Um, I was just, you know, just, can anybody in the room, maybe answer, um, how much, do we pay for the TIA or is that done by DOT?
Um, the, the, the district pays for the TIA.
And how much is that study? Do we know approximately how much that study is?
I do not know off the top of my head. I can check that.
Okay.
Or Mike can provide that later.
Much, and then the reason why I ask is, is since there's gonna be a significant improvement, that's gonna be open before the school opens, would it make sense to do it, to wait to do the TIA? I don't know if it's already been done or not. So this may be moot point, but would it make sense to do the TIA until after the bypass opens to get a reality of how much it will improve or maybe even worsen traffic issues in the vicinity of where we'll be constructing the school?
You can do an addendum TIA, it doesn't have to be full TIA. So if you do one now, the same firm can do them to it by just reviewing the files they have with data background traffic. And it should be a lot simpler.
Okay, so, yeah, my, my, my recommendation for staff would be, and obviously, this is at the pleasure of the board, but certainly, we can pass this on to our project manager as well, once we sign that contract, that we do an addendum to the TIA after that improvement's done, which might provide us more useful information. And I, I, I think you said you had a colleague that might speak to the staggered bell schedule. I don't know if anybody can speak to that at this meeting or not, but that's still one outlined, outlined question that I don't think you were able to answer for reasonable reasons. And if we could maybe get information from whomever the subject matter expert would be to answer that question, I think that would be useful information as well.
I can answer that question. I was waiting for everybody to be finished with the, with, with Kirsten's portion, portion of the question. I'm Tammy Dernon with MSTA. There are many schools all over the state that do have a staggered bell schedule. It is a, um, not a great idea to put two large schools together at one site. And when that happens, we typically acquire a TIA. I don't count a lot of new schools I've been working with. I've been working with literally a, a lot of existing schools experiencing congestion problems. And that is always one thing that I recommend to them is, uh, a step will buy a mini, minimum 45 minutes. I can give you one off the top of my head, that's been very problematic. It's not a public school. It is a charter school, about the same size. It's on a very busy highway. There are about 2,300 students currently, and it's been blown up the highway. Cars have been parked on the highway. Parents get in, can't get out. They're not staggering as they were recommended to. And when they opened, they did not put in their recommended improvements. So it was pandemonium in Cracker and, uh, emergency vehicles needed on site couldn't get on site. So that is
Thank you.
hate to happen at your location as well.
Mr. Chair, I have no further questions. Thank you, sir. And thank you for your, your
All right, thank you, Mr. Cordero.
Mr. Chair, if I can. Kirsten, are you, are you the Division Engineer out of Jacksonville Office?
This is Kirsten Sprakas. I'm the District Engineer in our offices in Jacksonville that we cover Onslow in Pender County.
Okay.
I think that's what you asked. It was a, a little hard to hear.
Yeah, I was asking for the Division, I didn't know if you were the Division Engineer. That's, that's what I was asking. My question is
No, the Division Engineer is not on the call. He covers all six counties.
Okay, uh, so I would ask you, if you will, to please reach out and, uh, if you can, forward the notes or the recommendations that DOT made prior to acquiring the land per General Statute 136-18. That way, we can kinda move forward. And if there are no notes, I would also like to know that as well.
Um, I'm not sure that if you're speaking to me, we don't yet have a re, uh, approved TIA.
No.
I'm not sure what you're asking to happen.
Do, do you know the policy I'm referring to?
You talking about the General Statute?
The, the DOT policy for educational facilities discussing driveway permits.
I mean, there's, there's a general statute that talks about, um, school studies and, um, and reimbursement and, and school driveways.
Yeah, so let me, let, let me Let me just read you, uh, read you what I'm seeing. And it could have been revised, because this is from 2003, but, you know, if it's been revised, so be it. GS 136-18 requires that upon acquiring land from new schools or relocating slash expanding an existing school, all public and private school systems shall coordinate with DOT's local Division Engineer on evaluation of the driveway access and traffic operational and safety impacts to the state highway system resulting from the development of proposed site. The Division Engineer will provide written recommendations to the school system based on the NC DOT findings. I'm asking for those findings from the Division Engineer, if you could please acquire those.
So, so that, that is basically how the General Statute is written. But the District Engineer does that on behalf of the Division Engineer. But we, like I said, we don't yet have any final findings, because we haven't received a final TIA that addresses the preliminary comments.
So nobody contacted DOT prior to purchasing land and figuring out the impacts? Is that what you're telling me?
No, I mean, my, we, we received, um, y'all, to my knowledge, y'all already owned the land, um, when this TIA was scoped.
Okay.
The scoping documents were sent to us. And, um, we developed the scope for the TIA, you know, what needed to be studied. And y'all already owned the land at that point.
Okay, so my next thing is for Ms. Gurre Miller. Have we got any farther with, uh, with the thinking of with the recommendations to the, to the contractor as far as not implementing a three-tier schedule or staggered schedule? Any recommendations made to the contractors?
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing your question.
Have you or anybody else on your team made a recommendation to the contractor without including the three-tier bell schedule or staggered bell schedule?
For a school similar to this? I mean, I've made plenty of, if it's a regular school, we're not gonna recommend a staggered bell schedule. But if it's two large schools at one location, that is pretty much a given that we will recommend a staggered bell schedule.
Okay.
Yeah, these, these camps just put together are, are not good ideas, because that's a lot of traffic that has to be mitigated. The TIA was looking at two different scenarios. One was supposed to, one to med, um, one for non-staggered and one for staggered bell. And I believe all that was looked at was And I believe all that looked at was non-staggered, and the recommendation was a dual-lane roundabout, which we don't build, and would be at a minimal cost of five dollars. So if that was actually a finalized TIA, I could have rejected it. Because that does not mitigate acceptably the traffic on the highway.
So, let me ask a question, what happened with the charter school that refused to follow the recommendation? How were they penalized?
Uh, well, they can have their driveway permit taken away, we haven't done that, there's, um, that's not something, you know, we like to do. They're looking to actually expand, which we're denying, because they, they cannot mitigate the traffic they had then. They did finally put in the improvements we had recommended, but they're not following direction of the stagger, they're not following the path.
Okay.
And they're trying to work around to, to, to fix it after the fact.
All right, uh, Mr. McPherson?
Yes, sir, Mr. Hall.
Does DOT legally have the authority to do that?
To take away or to not provide a driveway permit?
Yes.
That is within their purview.
Okay.
That's within their purview.
Okay. I just, uh, it's just kind of odd a school that size would basically, you know, say no to everything, but yet they exist right now, so it's just kind of different.
Well, I mean, that's, I mean, that's a, that's a decision made by DOT about that specific situation, I don't know why they wouldn't have, you know, but that's, once again, that's a, that's a question for DOT. I mean, I think it, it basically, you know, they've completely disregarded all of the
Yeah, that's what it sounds like.
With no, with no consequences. Um, but I mean, if, if either of the first recall would address that, but that's, that's used to be what's happened.
The consequences are liability goes on to them, so the crashes that are occurring and anything of that goes on them. We have talked to them, we have worked with them year after year after year.
Okay. All right. Just, uh, wondering, that, that, that does sound like a touchy situation, to say the least, with, with them. Um, okay, anyone else have any questions?
Hi, this is Beth Burns, I'm the district two representative on the board. Um, I just wanted to make the comment that NC DOT and Pender County schools have worked a lot together in the past, especially in trying to mitigate traffic around our topsail schools. And, um, I just wanted to say that I appreciate you guys getting on the phone with us today and discussing this and trying to help us find better ways, because we're all about safety also, and I think we all have the same goal. And it's just going to take some, um, I guess, a little bit of negotiation and planning to make sure that that goal is met. Um, so again, I just wanted to say thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, Mr. Cordero or Mr. Spivey, do you have any additional questions?
No, Mr. Chair, I appreciate it.
All right. All right, any of our staff have any questions before we go on?
No, sir.
All right, well, I appreciate both of y'all joining us today and answering some questions for us, we'll, uh, see what we can, uh, get worked out here. So thank y'all, thank y'all both for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, thank you. All right. So, uh, hate to admit, but I deleted my agenda, but we have item four, which is an EC contract for Blazer Works.
I actually have the next two.
Uh, good morning, board. Um, so we have an EC contract with Blazer Works for an EC teacher, um, to fill a vacancy at Malpas Corner Elementary. Any questions?
Make a motion to approve the EC teacher at Malpas Corner.
All right, Mr. Springer has made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Burns has made a second. So we will start with Mr. Springer.
Uh.
And Ms. Burns.
Aye.
Mr. Cordero.
Aye.
And Mr. Spivey.
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous, thank you. And your next item.
One more. Um, we are seeking to purchase a tractor for the Pender High School agricultural program, um, to enhance their hands-on learning. Currently, the tractor that they're using is the, um, teacher's tractor, so they're replacing it with a brand-new tractor, enabling them to, um, do all kinds of instructional activities, land preparation, crop management, and general farm maintenance, as well as like maintenance to the tractor and things like that. Um, the purchase aligns with the mission for Pender Ha- Pender High School's agricultural program to provide high-quality experiential learning. Um, it is coming from a grant, and it's forty-eight thousand five seventy-one twenty-five. We did receive three quotes for this, for this, and, uh, they chose Nash Equipment in Berga to purchase the tractor.
I'll make that motion.
All right, Ms. Burns has made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And Mr. Springer has made a second, uh, Ms. Burns.
Aye.
And Mr. Springer.
Uh.
Mr. Spivey.
Mr. Chair, I've got a couple of questions about it, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Uh, now, what, what size is that tractor doing now?
It is a Kubota tractor, and I'm not sure of that, actually. It's a Kubota tractor with a bucket and a loader cab.
All right, uh, you said the grant was forty-eight thousand, I believe?
The purchase is forty-eight thousand five seventy-one, I think the grant is fifty thousand.
Okay, is that, so is there no implement package that comes with that tractor, uh, for forty-eight thousand? That seems like it's probably gonna be around a fifty horse, uh, it might be a little bigger, uh, fifty-four or something like that for that kind of price. I just want to make sure, I, I'm all for it, uh, I'll say that, but I want to make sure we got some implements, uh, to work with our agriculture department. Um, we need something for him to work with, uh, as far as either tillers or, uh, learning how to hook up these implements. Would that be something we could purchase in our package, along with in our scope and our budget?
Um, I can surely get back to you on that, on exactly what comes with the tractor.
Okay.
I think he, and it, it sounds like there'd be a little bit of additional money that wasn't used.
There's a, there's a couple of thou-
Yeah, so there, there are some small things that, that, uh, you know, that would help on, um-
Well, how long is this grant good for? How, how long do they have to spend the money? Oh, okay, very good.
Yeah.
Well, I've
I, I missed that part, um, how long, how long do we have?
A year.
It's usually a year.
Okay.
But I'll get that information to you guys later on today, for sure.
All right, I think the
All right, thank you.
He just, I think he wants to make sure too, that the, all the money is used, because there could be something small, whether it be a, you know, a little turn plow or fertilizer spreader or whatever, something that, some other benefit could get out of the money as well for more, more equipment for it. Is that
Well, well, Mr. Chair, also, Mr. Chair, they, they sell packages, uh, in certain places as well, I know we have to look at the, the bottom dollar, but, you know, we also can look at package as far as a trailer, some do come with implements, uh, at some point we might need to move that tractor. Um, and I, I just want to make sure that there's looking and broadening our vision of what we can actually get for that kind of money. It might not be the same size tractor, we might have to take a step down, but I think those implements are gonna be, uh, imperative to the teaching of agriculture.
Well
I can put this on action for the October meeting and then get that information to you.
Yeah, we could title it, as long as it doesn't mess them up with their, I mean
Lisa, if the grant is, we're not at any deadline on that grant.
We just received the funding, so we should be
We're only talking, what, two more weeks?
So two more weeks, and then we'll get you that information.
I just don't want to slow up his, uh, class at Pender Highs, is what I'm
Okay, well, I'll rescind the motion then.
Well, but we might, I mean, two weeks may not make a difference.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if we may, we can go ahead and vote on it, and, uh, like, and I'll say aye to it, and, um, we could, we could look further into the future to, to make sure we got what they need.
All right, well, if, if Mr. Herring comes up with, hey, they've got this piece of equipment, it's nineteen hundred dollars or something like that, could, uh, we would probably need to vote, we need to vote on that separately, or could it go?
No.
If it's under thirty thousand, we can just
They can purchase it separate?
I'm just saying, I guarantee you he can find a use for the little bit that's left, that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, so I just don't want to hold them up, is what I'm trying to get at. But Mr. Spivey's right, there are places that have, like, a package deal, that kind of thing. The only problem would be if it went over the amount, like, let's say it was fifty-one thousand, then we'd have to find the difference from somewhere, but, you know, that may not be a problem either for smaller things like that, but I will say that he's done a good job trying to get that program back on its feet, and he's done a lot with the little for the last, uh, six or seven years, probably.
Agreed.
And I mean, he's got his own stuff there now doing it, so, just saying.
Yeah.
Okay, but, uh, Mr. Spivey, you say you want to go ahead and proceed with this instead of waiting till the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, Mr. Cordero, do you have any questions about any of it?
Uh, just a comment that if, if we're gonna have another presentation, I would invite, you know, the two-term involved to
Yes.
Give a, just a very great presentation, you know, it's a good opportunity to show off to the public, you know, the great things that he's doing with the program, so I would certainly welcome that, um, but I would vote aye as well.
Absolutely.
All right, can we, uh, can we maybe get him to come to our meeting and just give a short, he'll probably do it in five minutes or less, so
He probably will.
I've done some work with him myself, so
I'll see if he's avail- available for the information agenda.
My guess is he probably will be, he's usually pretty, uh
Yeah.
You know, on the ball about coming to things, so, okay, and I'm, he, uh, could probably answer some of these questions better than any of us do about the, you know, what are you gonna do with it, what kind is it, what, this kind of thing. Okay. Do we have a motion to, uh, approve this?
Um, I make the motion.
All right, Ms. Burns has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Spivey has made a second, so we'll start Ms. Burns.
Aye.
And Mr. Spivey.
Aye.
And Mr. Cordero.
Aye.
And Mr. Springer.
Uh.
And that's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, I'll get that information.
All right.
That's it?
That's it, all right. All right, anyone have any comments before we go? Staff, our board members? All right.
Most adjourned.
All right, Mr. Springer's made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
And Ms. Burns has made a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, unanimous, we will see everyone this afternoon, thank you.